Oldsmen?
Present.
Commissioner Jenks?
Present.
Commissioner Elder?
Present.
Mayor Paul, present. We have a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Changes or corrections? Okay, with that, roll call vote for all those in favor. Mayor Pro Tem Rozell?
Aye.
Commissioner Elder?
Aye.
Commissioner Jenks?
Aye.
This is Amy Horowitz.
Commissioner Oldsmen?
Yes.
Mayor Paul, yes. Okay, approval of the consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor, I'll move that we approve this evening's consent agenda with the removal of item number two, special meeting minutes of June 22nd, 2020.
We don't need to be on camera.
Well, don't need one more.
Is there a second to that?
Seconded.
Thank you. Okay, all those in favor, actually, we have roll call vote. Mayor Pro Tem Rozell?
Aye.
Commissioner Oldsmen?
Aye.
Commissioner Jenks?
Aye.
Commissioner Elder?
Aye.
Mayor Paul, aye.
So will you be adding that then as agenda item number 13, or are you just removing it totally at this point?
We're removing it totally at this point.
Okay.
Okay, communications, we have two communication, actually, we have three communications. Two of them, all three of them are members of the community who serve on boards and commissions. Do we have a motion to accept their resignations with thanks for the time served?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, Amy, there's three openings now, one on the senior committee, one on the planning commission, and one on the library board, so if we can make an advertisement of that. Do a roll call vote on that. Mayor Pro Tem Rozell?
Aye.
Commissioner Jenks?
Aye.
Commissioner Elder? Commissioner Elder?
Aye.
Commissioner Oldsmen?
Aye.
Mayor Paul, aye. Motion carries. Now comes the time for our county commissioner and other elected officials' remarks. I see we have County Commissioner Helene Zach with us this evening.
Nice to see everyone virtually and to be here. So, a lot going on in the county. We are very busy appropriating and allocating our CARES funding of $219 million. And I do want to refer residents to this website, www.oakgov.com/covid. And at the bottom, this is all the COVID information from the county. And at the bottom, on the left-hand side, there's a grant link. And there are a multitude of grants out there, one of which is for cities, villages, and townships to submit COVID-related expenses. And we did start approving that, and I hope, Amy, that you're working on submitting for our expenses. And there, we have roughly about $8 million for those residents that might be having mortgage or housing problems or utility problems. You can call up our housing counselors, there, you know, there's a link how to do that, and apply for assistance. We also have our third round of economic recovery grants for businesses. And this third round is trying to target businesses that have been closed longer, like gyms, restaurants, so forth. We also have appropriated $2 million to hire 60-something public health nurses to put in the schools, to help each school system prepare for bringing students back. How can they be there safely? How do you wash your hands? What can we do to help prepare the environment? So there's a whole continuum of lots of different grants that are available. I do want to talk about contact tracing. When we first, I had a report about this last week, part of the puzzle of dealing with COVID is having good contact tracing. When we started this pandemic in March, we had three trained contact tracers in Oakland County Health Department. And previously, that worked well for our measles outbreak and other things. But obviously, that's not enough for COVID. And now we have 200 staff that have been trained to do contact tracing. And we did train the trainer. These staff have been supervised. They have observed other staff that are more seasoned doing it. So should we have another outbreak, we're ready to go. Another thing that Commissioner Rozell knows about, we did approve purchase of some special voting equipment that will be high-speed counting of absentee ballots. And the county, and thank you, Commissioner Rozell, in his day job, is offering to help cities, villages, and townships that want help with counting their absentee ballots. And I think it's a wonderful investment that we're making to, you know, help the elections go more smoothly. We're also, as finance chair, starting the budget, and I do welcome all of you to tune into our Oakland County meeting on Wednesday, July 15th, starting at 5:00 PM. Oakland County exec Dave Coulter will be presenting the ballot, the budget. And it is, like always, a three-year balanced budget. And I welcome you all to join on virtually. Any questions for me?
I was just gonna say, thank you, Commissioner. We didn't qualify based on our size for direct COVID funding, but being able to submit through the county and access to some of the money that the county has is important for things that we've spent money on Plexiglas and things to make City Hall safe for the public to come in and safe for our employees. And so, it'll definitely help relieve some of the budget pressures that we face, and we appreciate what you've done and what the commission's done to open up some of that money for us.
Thank you. We're there to support you in any way that we can, and, you know, Health Department, everybody's just done an amazing job responding. It's very, very busy, as you know. Any other question?
Any other questions? Okay.
Thank you.
Moving on now to public participation. This is an opportunity for the public to address the city commission for an item that is not on the agenda. Anyone have a comment? Okay, Mr. Bieber would like to make a comment. There you go.
Good evening. At the end of June, I sent a letter to Ms. Sullivan discussing my concerns. She indicated she would forward that to the commission. I was wondering whether the commissioners did in fact receive that letter.
It was included in my Friday weekly update. Said, yes, they did receive it.
Oh, thank you. Is there a way that that letter can become part of the record of tonight's meeting?
We don't typically do that.
Okay. Well, I would just like to bring to the commissioners' attention a very serious concern that's come up, and it involves the use in the neighborhood of a series of wood-burning devices, chimeneas, fire pits, just outside fires, and now wood-fired sauna devices that have been routinely making the air in and around my home unbreathable in a very frequent basis. Besides extreme discomfort, it's really caused my family and myself to have, I mean, we're healthy people, but sore throats, coughs, headaches from the smoke that drifts into our backyard and through our windows. This is the problem that we've been experiencing. I've given it a lot of thought, and it seems to me that for the council to permit activities which so negatively influence adjacent homeowners is just not right. And I'd like the council to consider this matter and consider my request that the current permission to use these smoke-emitting activities, which don't stay confined to the people using them at all, but as I say, routinely make our life difficult and frankly unhealthy, that those activities should not be permitted when they cause that kind of effect on the neighbors of people who are using them.
Okay. Thank you for your comments. I know we don't have time to consider that or discuss that yet, but we will take it under consideration.
I just wanted to emphasize that, thank goodness, me and my family and my children and grandchildren are currently healthy, as I hope all of you and your loved ones are. And we definitely want to stay that way. But COVID or not COVID, the breathing of this smoke is, as I attached to my letter to Ms. Sullivan, a very clear study that shows what the effects of breathing wood and other smoke is. It's just indisputable that it has immediate and long-lasting effects on people's health. So I really urge the commission to take this seriously, and wonder if there are any questions that I haven't touched on that I could address that might help you understand the viewpoint.
Mr. Mayor, could you ask the city manager perhaps to study some of our neighboring communities and see if there are restrictions being placed on this type of activity by some of our neighbors, just to get a feel for what some other folks are doing, if this is an issue in their community as well?
We absolutely can do that.
Mr. Mayor, I might just add something in response to Mr. Bieber's comments. It is true that there are a lot of these wood-burning fire pits out there now, and a few years, you're not the first person who's brought it up. And it is also true that you cannot, if the smoke is flowing into your neighbor's house, because that's trespass, and if it's a chronic problem, I suggest that you contact Mr. Berry, who I'm sure can offer the folks burning the materials some advice on what they can and can't do. We did think about this. When I say "think about it," I mean it came up a couple times over the year. There just haven't been very many complaints. And so, one question that comes up is, do you wade in to an issue? You know, if it's one resident who said their neighbor had a fire pit and it was too close to their house on a narrow lot, well, the answer's simple. You know, Hank goes over and asks him if they can move it away from the neighbor's side of their house, and everybody seems to be happy for the time being. But personally, you know, my own personal view is I don't think we should allow wood-burning devices anymore for many of the reasons you've said. Propane works just fine. We have a fire pit that's propane, that when you're done using it, you turn the switch and it goes off completely, and there's no smoke, there's no nothing, and you certainly have the pleasantry, if you will, of having it. But I just don't want you to leave here thinking that there's nothing you can do. If this is a chronic problem, and it's one neighbor who probably doesn't intend you well at all, but if you put a call in to Mr. Berry, I assure you that the problem can be taken care of, at least temporarily. But overall, I personally share your concern and share your view. But like I said, it becomes a question of whether or not we as a commission should get into regulating, you know, if you don't need to be, you know, interested in search of a problem. So it's kind of a balance, but we have, there have been discussions with the city manager about this in the past. You're not the first person that's brought it up. I'm sure you won't be the last, but in the meantime, if what you're experiencing is a problem, a call to Mr. Berry should result in a resolution of that problem. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much. Thanks for your comments. Mr. Potter?
Hi, yep, how's it going, everybody? Listen, we just wanted to make, my wife and I, Suzie Potter, we just wanted to go on record as saying that we really are in support of any activities that would lead to increased diversity and inclusion in Huntington Woods. And I know the city is totally in support of that, but I think we just need to step up the action a little bit. And I know there's a proposed committee, and I'd like to see that committee staffed with volunteers and have the city support it. I know that we as a community support and endorse diversity and inclusion, but I think it's time to like have some action steps that really get us to a more diverse and inclusive community. That's it.
All right, thank you, John. Any other comments?
Hi, hello, Mayor. Hello, council, commission, and everyone else on this call today. My name is Regina Weiss. I'm a city council member nearby in Oak Park, and I just wanted to say a couple things really quick. It's funny you are talking about wood fires, because we've actually been considering revising our ordinance on this as well. So if anyone on the commission would like to reach out to talk about that, we've been gathering information on it and researching some other ordinances in neighboring communities as well. And I also just wanted to introduce myself as a candidate for state representative for the 27th district. And just to let everyone know that if they want to reach out to me to learn more about myself and my campaign, my website is reginowaisforstaterep.com, and my cell phone number is 248-791-2623. Thank you, and have a great night.
Thank you. Any other comments? All right, here it is. Public participation is closed, and we'll move on to the first item of business, which is a matter of adopting an ordinance to amend the City of Huntington Woods Code of Ordinance, Chapter 4, to add Article 3 chickens to permit, regulate, and establish requirements relating to the keeping of, this is a first reading. Amy, do you want to give us a little background on how we got here?
Sure. We've had our backyard chicken ordinance for one year now. And at the last commission meeting, we lifted the one-year pilot program. We still have interest in backyard chickens, so we are recommending two changes to the current ordinance. One is that we increase the number of permits that can be issued from three permits to six permits. And because there have not been any issues with the backyard chickens, currently, the ordinance requires two inspections when somebody comes online and gets a permit. But since we haven't had any problems, the second change of the ordinance would be a renewal of a permit, assuming that there have been no problems in the past and no problem with the annual inspection, that we limit the inspections to one and not have to do two per year. So those changes are in the proposed ordinance. The second item would be the actual adoption of the fee schedule to go from either one permit cost or two permit costs, depending on what kind of permit was applied for.
We have a motion to approve the first reading.
So move.
Second?
Second.
Are there any public comment? Seeing none, any comments or questions from the commission?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to just add, I'm really glad that there have been no incidents and that the cost to the owners are going to be reduced as long as they can show that the first year, there were no issues. So I know that was a concern about affordability for kids to be able to do this. And I think, you know, it being initially a pilot program, we have found that balance, and I think six is a good number, and hopefully, this will be put to rest after this.
Any other comments? All right, we'll roll call vote. Mayor Pro Tem Rozell?
Aye.
Commissioner Oldsmen?
Aye.
Commissioner Jenks?
Aye.
Commissioner Elder?
Aye.
Mayor Paul, aye. Motion carries. Move on to item number two, which is the matter of establishing the fees that the city manager talked about, the backyard chicken permits.
Don't move, Mr. Mayor.
Second.
Any public comment? Seeing none, any comments or questions from the commission? Roll call vote. Mayor Pro Tem Rozell?
Aye.
Commissioner Jenks?
Aye.
Commissioner Oldsmen?
Aye.
Commissioner Elder?
Aye.
Mayor Paul, aye. Motion carries. Item number three is also a first reading. It's a matter of adopting an ordinance to amend Chapter 40 of the zoning code, Article 4, District Regulations. This is a sort of a housekeeping-type matter. I don't know if we want to turn this over to Hank Berry to explain it?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm happy to. Back at the May 26th Planning Commission meeting, a public hearing was held, and the purpose of which was to amend Chapter 40, zoning Article 4 of District Regulations, Section 40-4.03, R1A through R1E, one family districts, delete in its entirety former subsection 40-4.034, and to renumber the meaning subsections. In English, what that means is, is that we had something that was in there that should have come out on the original zoning rewrite. What we were talking about was the sentence that says, "One additional foot of total side yard is required for every one foot or portion thereof over building height over 26 feet. At least one half of the additional side yard shall be on the left side." Back when the zoning ordinance was rewritten, it was recommended to remove this, as it really wasn't practical and didn't accomplish at the time what it was set out to do when enacted. It had become problematic in that the city and zone districts were already built to standards that established in the R1D, which is our most prevalent district, minimum five-foot setback on one side, total of 14. So it was consistent with what was there. And in that zone district, we have 30-foot houses, we have 26-foot houses, we have 20-foot houses. Basically, additionally, the height and mass were addressed in the zoning ordinance rewrite under something that we've called "character bonuses." So the purpose of the height restriction was to reduce the masses of the buildings and to encourage some other architecture and design that might be something that would be more consistent with the City of Huntington Woods. So while this one was removed from the charts in Munich Code, which are the scrolling charts that you see, the sentence was not. So there's a conflict in the ordinance, as it were, plus, we've already readdressed this in our character bonuses. And in our character bonuses, we've done several things, which we give people credit. In other words, credit equating to square footage. So what we've done with that was, is that if you did have a roof height under 26-foot or less, you picked up an additional 150 square feet that you could use in your structure. So it's well worthwhile. And in addition, we had it so that a roof height of an addition is equal to or lower than the existing roof height. So basically, what we feel is that has been accomplished a lot more than we were with the other one, and we couldn't have it half-in, half-out anyway, so we actually have a mechanism for this. So the planning commission did agree at the time, and when we published the ordinance, this should have been omitted, and it just was not. So quite honestly, like the mayor said, this is simply a housekeeping measure. The planning did vote in favor of recommending this change to the city commission at the May meeting.
Okay, do we have a motion to approve the first reading?
So moved.
A second?
Seconded.
Thank you. Any public comment? Any comments or questions from the commission? All right, roll call vote. Mayor Pro Tem Rozell?
Aye.
Commissioner Elder?
Aye.
Commissioner Jenks?
Aye.
Commissioner Oldsmen?
Aye.
Mayor Paul, aye. Motion carries. Moving on to item number four is a resolution, matter of consideration. The City of Huntington Woods enter into a contract agreement with Royal Roofing of Orion, Michigan, for replacement of the DPW sections of the roof and the police station roof in the amount of $98,600. And further being resolved, that the City of Huntington Woods enter into a contract with Shriver Roofing of Wixom, Michigan, for the replacement of the Recreation Center E roof in the amount of $105,100. We have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Tim, is there anything you need to add to that?
I'll just add that, so Section E of the Rec Center roof is the section under all the HVAC equipment, so it's a very difficult section to be replaced, that to remove ductwork and everything else. So we bid this out last year, and the bids just came in like three times our budget. So we decided to hold off and rebid it this year. And with all the COVID shutdowns, we actually got very favorable bids this year, so it worked out well that we could get it in within budget.
Will this have any impact on the solar panels that are up there?
It will not. No, it's not in that section.
All right, any public comment? Any comments or questions from the commission?
Mr. Mayor, I was just gonna ask, this looks like it's the low bidder on two of the three buildings overall, probably the low bidder. Did we check this company's references? I mean, are other municipalities or other folks satisfied with the work that these folks do? Sometimes with the low bidder, you get what you pay for. I just want to make sure.
Yeah, so these bids are through a company called Garland. They're all pre-qualified contractors, so it wasn't a public bid. It was all pre-qualified. And these are all contractors that do, you know, GM tech center, hospital-type jobs, so they're all qualified. Royal Roofing has done a number of projects in the city already. They did the library roof, so we're confident they're both very good contractors.
Great, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I have a question for Tim. So I had asked Amy and you previously, so thank you for this information, and it's my understanding that it's the lifespan of these roofs across the board from all of these proposals are 20 years, etc.
That's correct, yes.
Okay. And I guess that was my only comment, is 20 years is a good amount of time, and I'm glad to see that these came in below budget. What is the timeframe in the process?
So we haven't nailed down a specific timeframe, but hopefully later. So we haven't nailed down a specific timeframe, but hopefully later this summer, we'll get, August, September, we'll get them in here.
Okay, thank you.
All right, any other questions? Roll call vote, Mayor Pro Tem Rozell.
Aye.
Commissioner Olson?
Aye.
Commissioner Jenks?
Aye.
Commissioner Elder?
Aye.
Mayor Paul, aye, motion carries. Item number five is a matter of consideration to approve the MERS uniform transfer policy. Amy, do you want to give us a quick intro or?
Yes, we have an employee that we are promoting into the command union. So he needs to go into the command MERS division. But because that division is closed, we have to do a special resolution that the city is authorizing and adding a new employee to that division.
Okay, do we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Support.
Any public comment? Any questions from the commission?
Mr. Mayor, just to clarify, Amy, this individual is covered under the defined benefit plan for the patrol officers? And they're just transferring into a command officer's defined benefit plan?
Yep, benefits are the same in both plans.
Great. What would happen if in the future, now that it's closed to new hires, if we have someone in the DC plan that wants to go into command, it's closed for both patrol officers and, and command?
Yes.
So this will, this is only an issue for folks who are current DB in one union that are moving into another union.
Yes, all new hires in public safety are defined contribution and all new, all, all those new hires that would get promoted after a certain date also are in the DC plan.
Great.
Okay, roll call vote, Mayor Pro Tem Rozell.
Aye.
Commissioner Rozell, I'm sorry, Commissioner Olson?
Aye.
Commissioner Jenks?
Aye.
Commissioner Elder?
Aye.
Mayor Paul, aye, motion carries. Item number six is a matter of consideration to approve authorized signatures for the MERS contract and service credit purchase approvals.
This is a new rule that MERS has implemented. They want the city commissions and city councils to direct who can sign the paperwork and agreements on behalf of the city. And this is only coming up now because this is the first time we're submitting a change to them. So we are recommending that the signers be the mayor, the city manager, or the finance director.
Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any public comment? Any comments or questions from the commission?
Amy, is this a single signature or dual? Single. Okay.
All right. Roll call vote, Mayor Pro Tem Rozell.
Aye.
Commissioner Olson?
Aye.
Commissioner Jenks?
Aye.
Commissioner Elder?
Aye.
Mayor Paul, aye, motion carries. Item number seven is a matter of consideration to enter into an interlocal agreement with Oakland County Cares Act for COVID nineteen pandemic reimbursement.
This is the program that Commissioner Zach was talking about and we do need to enter into an interlocal agreement with the county. We have not submitted anything at this point, but Tim has been collecting the receipts that we can submit either to FEMA or get, try to get reimbursement from the county. But first, we need to have an agreement in place with the county.
Okay, is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Any public comment? Any comments or questions from the commission?
Mr. Mayor, Tim, do you have an estimate on what we'll be submitting? We've been able to pull anything concrete together yet?
I don't have a perfect estimate, but it's probably around the ten thousand dollar range when you add everything together at this point. So not real, not a ton of money, but we'll take it.
Mr. Mayor, just a quick question, Tim and Amy. It's my understanding that you'll be able to reapply, is that correct?
Yes, it's not, it's not a one-time only submittal.
I see. Is it a first come, first served and do you know how it will be graded?
Uh, I think we're gonna learn that on Friday. They do know that they have a set amount of money that they are gonna deal with and they were, the county was trying to come up with some sort of formulation so that there would be a cap that each city could apply for. But I, I don't believe that they passed that out to us yet. We have a webinar on Friday, hopefully they'll go over that then.
Okay, great, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Roll call vote, Mayor Pro Tem Rozell.
Aye.
Commissioner Elder?
Aye.
Commissioner Jenks?
Aye.
Commissioner Olson?
Aye.
Mayor Paul, aye, motion carries. Moving on to item number eight, it's a matter of consideration that the city of Huntington Woods enter into an interlocal agreement with Oakland County for election services.
This is another one of the initiatives that Commissioner Zach was describing in her comments. This would be an agreement between the city of Huntington Woods and Oakland County for the county to count our absentee ballots, all the ones that come in by four o'clock the day before the election, any, anything that comes in the day of the election, we'd be responsible for counting in the precinct. And this is a, an agreement that doesn't have an end date. So we'll definitely do it in August and we can reassess and decide if we want to get out of the agreement and handle it ourselves in November, if we want to continue working with the, with the county. But it's a, it's a great deal for us. And we really appreciate the help.
I think we can trust the director of elections up at the county, he'll do his best job he can for us.
I heard he's an okay guy, Mr. Mayor, that's all I know.
God, I hope so.
I know where he lives, so if he screws up, we can find him.
All right, do we have a motion?
So moved.
Seconded.
Any public comment? Any comments or questions from the commission?
Do we have to deliver the ballots to the county? The county will pick them up from us on Monday after four o'clock. Excuse me, I'm gonna go get something to drink real quick.
Okay, any other comments or questions? Roll call vote, Mayor Pro Tem Rozell.
Aye.
Commissioner Olson?
Aye.
Commissioner Jenks?
Aye.
Commissioner Elder?
Aye.
Mayor Paul, aye, motion carries. Moving on to item number nine is a matter of consideration that the city of Huntington Woods incur in the rules and regulations concerning industrial pretreatment program as adopted by the Great Lakes Water Authority.
Yes, GLWA has recently adopted amendment to the rules or regulation that deal with PFAS. And so as a, as a member of GLWA, they want all the members to agree to abide by their rules, regulations. I did call them, it has no impact on our residential users. I thought it might impact the dry cleaners, but it does not. So this is luckily doesn't have any impact on us. So we recommend approving the agreement, or the, adopting the rules.
Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, any public comment? None, any comments or questions from the commission? All right, roll call vote, Mayor Pro Tem Rozell.
Aye.
Commissioner Jenks?
Aye.
Commissioner Olson?
Aye.
Commissioner Elder?
Aye.
Mayor Paul, aye, motion carries. Item number ten is a matter of consideration, the approval of the July twenty twenty update to the city employee manual.
This is an annual review of the personnel manual that covers both union and non-union employees. And you could see that the changes that are recommending are more housekeeping and providing more specifics about use of paid leave time. Nothing major and nothing that has any kind of budgetary impact on the city.
Do we have a motion to approve?
Moved.
Second.
Any public comment? Any comments or questions from the commission? All right, roll call vote, Mayor Pro Tem Rozell.
Aye.
Commissioner Elder?
Aye.
Commissioner Olson?
Aye.
Commissioner Jenks?
Aye.
Mayor Paul, aye, motion carries. Item number eleven is authorizing a request for reimbursement for the money spent to combat the West Nile virus. This is something we do annually, do we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
So moved, support.
Any public comment? Commission comments or questions? Roll call vote, Mayor Pro Tem Rozell.
Aye.
Commissioner Jenks?
Aye.
Commissioner Elder?
Aye.
Commissioner Olson?
Aye.
Mayor Paul, aye, motion carries. Our next item is a motion to move into closed session following the closure of this meeting. This is in order to discuss three different topics. One is union negotiations and the other two are attorney-client privileged litigation, Finkelberg versus the city of Huntington Woods and Hanover versus the city of Huntington Woods. And it can't be conducted in opening meeting because it would detrimentally affect the position of the city.
Mr. Mayor, I'll move that at the conclusion of the regular meeting, the city commission enter into closed session pursuant to MCL fifteen point two six eight to discuss union negotiations. Further to discuss pending litigation, Finkelberg versus city of Huntington Woods, Oakland County Circuit Court case number CA seventeen dash one fifty seven five thirty three NZ and pending litigation, Hanover versus city of Huntington Woods, Oakland County Circuit case number CA seventeen dash one six zero two four six dash CZ as discussing in an open meeting would have a detrimental effect on the position of the city.
We have a second?
Second.
Any public comment? Comments or questions from the commission? Roll call vote, Mayor Pro Tem Rozell.
Aye.
Commissioner Olson?
Aye.
Commissioner Elder?
Aye.
Commissioner Jenks?
Aye.
Mayor Paul, aye. And we will not be reconvening following the, the regular city commission meeting. Now moving on to the city manager's report.
I have a couple of updates from our departments, DPW. They, we're making good progress on the road construction. The York and Borgman project are getting curb and, the curbs and concrete approaches this week, which means that we should be ready to pave next week and everybody will be able to use their driveway and they won't have to park outside the, the block anymore. From the recreation department, they are sponsoring a going the social distance fifty K virtual run. This virtual challenge can be completed at any location with any workout or activity of your choice. Complete thirty one miles between now and July first and receive a commemorative medal. There's information on this innovative virtual program and other projects and events going on in the hometown here. Also, they recommend everybody check that out. It's a little obviously different than it's been in the past, but it is still interesting and fun. We are expecting a lot of absentee voting ballots, so we've put a new drop box at city hall. We've always had the one between the city hall parking lot and the public safety building, but we now have one in the vestibule, the east side of city hall that is open twenty four seven. That box is chained to the building and, and nailed shut, so it is very secure. So if you find that one drop box is full, make sure to check out the other one so that we can get your ballots counted. And then speaking of ballots, I want to remind everybody that political signs are not supposed to be between the road and the sidewalk. We have been trying to move them to the other side of the sidewalk when we find them, but as they get, you know, we get a proliferation and I can't guarantee that we'll move on. We may end up just taking them. And then the last thing is I just want to give a really special shout out to the recreation department for the Fourth of July virtual parade. I hope everybody watched it. Honestly, I had tears in my eyes watching it. It was really, really well done. It was really touching, really heartwarming. It just, it's just a great community event. I want to thank Colette Newton at the recreation center for putting it on. Judy Olds put it together and then Chris Auger helped us get it online and get it on all the formats, exactly ten o'clock on the Fourth of July. So it is showing on our cable channel, it's on our YouTube channel, which you could get from our website. And it's just well worth watching. In fact, I think we've got nineteen hundred views so far on our YouTube channel. So get out there and be nineteen hundred and one if you haven't seen it yet. And that's it.
Thank you. Are there any questions of the city manager? All right, seeing that, do we have a motion to adjourn the regular city commission meeting?
So moved.
Seconded.
Okay, roll call, Mayor Pro Tem Rozell.
Aye.
Commissioner Olson?
Aye.
Commissioner Elder?
Aye.
Commissioner Jenks?
Aye.
Mayor Paul, aye. With that, the regular city commission meeting is, is ended and we will move into closed session.
Yeah, anybody in the public that's still watching, I'm gonna move you into a waiting room but I'd suggest that you just leave the meeting because as, as the mayor said, we're not gonna be coming back into closed session. But I will.